This evening. As always, we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I understand we have an honored...
Life scout.
...life scout here. If you would like to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd appreciate that. That microphone right there.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. First item up on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. We do have three items under the consent agenda this evening, and that is council meeting minutes from the meeting of June 6, 2022. This was the 11:30 a.m. meeting, and then council meeting minutes of the meeting of June 6, 2022 at the 6:30 p.m. meeting. In addition to those, we have the alcoholic beverage license application PH-22-AB-18 Dipac Sabu LLC DBA Sabu, 35 Milton Avenue, Suite C, Alpharetta, Georgia 30009. Is there anything that a council member would like to remove from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion. Have a motion by Councilman Mitchell and a second by Councilman Hypes. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please vote yes; otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. I do want to note for the record, before we move into the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, that one of the items was deferred by the applicant. That item was Z-22-08/V-22-12, south of Will's Park. Item has been deferred by the applicant and will not be heard, discussed, or considered during the June 27, 2022 meeting. That is, this evening, and the item will be placed on a future city council agenda. So if you were here for that item, just might have saved yourself some time. That being done, we'll go ahead and move on to the first item on our public hearing agenda this evening, and that is MP-22-05/CU-22-04/SS Entertainment LLC Event Facility, 5815 Windward Parkway. Mr. Woodman, you have the floor.
Event facility in a 5,794 square foot suite in the Windward Crossing Shopping Center. They're requesting a maximum capacity of 408 people. Property is located, and I do have the location map on the overhead. This is at 5815 Windward Parkway at Suite 101. The shopping center is located at the southeast corner of Windward Parkway and North Point Parkway. Windward Crossing Shopping Center was developed in 2005. It's two-story over basement. It's about 50,000 square foot shopping center. There's office on the second floor, retail and restaurant on the first floor, and there is a basement level underneath the building for office use. Other businesses within this center is Rome Innovative Workplace, which is creative office space, Knuckle Up Fitness, Little Tokyo Sushi, and Nalan Indian Cuisine. Property is zoned CUP, Community Unit Plan. This is subject to the Windward Master Plan Pod 66. SS Entertainment LLC is a new business. They offer special event facility with event planning services. As I mentioned, this is Suite 101. And just to familiarize you with the shopping center, so the two-story-over-basement shopping center is located here. The out parcels are right out front, so this is the former Black Walnut Cafe, and this is the credit union site over here. So the shopping center behind. And then this blue area represents the space in the basement level of that building. The blue area here is Suite 101. This is the layout of the space that the applicant proposes. Access to this site is, you can get access through the main level of the shopping center. So there is an elevator lobby that will either take you up to the Rome office space up on the second floor or down to the basement space. You can also access that space. There is structured parking underneath this building, so a portion of the building, go back to the... Turn that upside down there. So in the basement level of this building, this space over here is occupiable space, and then the western half of the building is actually parking. So you can access this space either from the first floor, from the front of the building, and go down in the elevator, or you can drive and park in this area and come into the space. The applicant's use would accommodate corporate business, corporate and business conferences, banquets, wedding receptions, graduations, and birthday celebrations. Catering, photography, music will all be outsourced. Hours of operation that are requested, Monday through Friday, 6 p.m. to 1 a.m., and Saturday through Sunday, 11 a.m. to 1 a.m. Applicant anticipates approximately four employees with this business. Of course, we looked at this particular center. There's other tenants at the center, so we want to make sure that there's parking for this use as well as the other businesses. There are approximately 230 parking spaces within the center. Not including the applicant's space, there would be a surplus of 60 parking spaces. So 60 spaces would be available for whatever business would go into Suite 101. That's the applicant's suite. Based on the parking requirements for this type of use, we determined that a max occupancy of 408 people would generate a need for 143 parking spaces. So that's well over the 60 that are available at the site. So backing into the parking calculation for a special event facility, we determined that a 225-person event facility would generate a total need of 60 parking spaces when you share parking amongst the businesses. So, of course, we looked at the other businesses in this center, and we did notice that there are some business, there's some overlap in the hours of operation between the applicant's business and other businesses operating in the center. We identified that there are parking, there's overlap in parking needs between the hours of 6 p.m. and 8 p.m. Monday through Friday, and then also between 11 a.m. and 2 p.m. on We identified that there is a parking deficit of as many as 30 spaces during those times. And so we are recommending that the maximum capacity be reduced from the 408 that's requested by the applicant. Of course, we reviewed this request against the established review criteria. We do believe that the proposal would not have significant impacts on surrounding properties. We do think that the use would also improve synergy within the shopping center, giving other businesses operating in this center opportunity to provide services within this space. However, as we noted, the requested maximum capacity isn't supported by sufficient parking. And so to avoid any kind of parking shortages, we are recommending a reduction. The community zoning information meeting was held on May 11 for this particular item, and we did not receive any public comments at that meeting. We brought this item to the Planning Commission on June 2. There were no public comments at that meeting, and Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval subject to staff's conditions. Those conditions, there are six of them. They read, "One, special event facility shall be added as a conditional use at 5815 Windward Parkway Suite 101 and limited to no more than 5,794 square feet. Two, conditional use approval shall be limited to SS Entertainment LLC. No additional special event facility use or subleasing shall be permitted within the approved space. Three, special event facility shall be limited to no more than 225 people with final maximum occupancy subject to fire marshal approval. Condition four, events shall be limited to corporate and business conferences, banquets, wedding receptions, and graduation and birthday celebrations. Five, hours of operation shall be limited to Monday through Friday, 6 p.m. to 1 a.m. and Saturday through Sunday, 11 a.m. to 1 a.m. And condition six, if a parking problem is identified by the city, SS Entertainment LLC shall be required to correct the problem by reducing the capacity of events, providing an off-site parking agreement for parking within 500 feet of the facility, and/or providing valet services as approved by staff." And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions from council at this time? Councilman Hypes.
Mr. Woodman, with respect to condition number three, how do you interpret that? Does that mean if the fire marshal says occupancy is permitted up to 350, that that becomes the number, or is it the lesser of the two?
It would be the lesser of the two, yeah. The intention of this condition is that the fire marshal wouldn't approve an occupancy higher than 225.
Thank you. Any other questions from council at this time? Councilman Dorito.
Yes, Mr. Woodman. Going back to condition six, I'm making an assumption that that's applicable to number three. Or is that meaning if the parking problem is identified by the city as not having sufficient capacity for the 225, what happens? We reduce that number?
Yeah, so there's, basically, what we're doing, what we were trying to do here is provide for options for the applicant. So if a parking problem is identified, and that would be identified by the city, they would have the opportunity to either reduce their capacity, to find parking on an off-site location within 500 feet, or providing some kind of valet service to accommodate, to offset that parking problem they're having. So there's, there's some options there, and it's all, it would be subject to approval by staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff on this item? Thank you, Mr. Woodman. Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to answer any questions we have.
Any questions, Councilman Dorito?
I didn't catch your name, or did he state it? I didn't...
My name is Shiva, and this is my partner, Satish.
Hey, Shiva. Question with respect to the conditions. Do you have any concerns about the conditions that we're considering?
No, sir.
You don't? So you're okay with reducing your capacity from what you initially requested was 408 to 225 people max?
Yes, absolutely.
That has no impact on the economic viability of your business plan?
Not, not really. We have, we requested based on the space, the entire space, but then we realized over the period of time between the discussions we had with the county, with the application process, that we need to have certain number of spaces, and we need to share the spaces with the other tenants as well. So we're good.
Okay. One other, one more question. With respect to the number of employees, I think I heard Mr. Woodman say four. Did I hear that right?
Yes.
Are you looking to have outside subcontractors? Because if you have a space that could have up to now, if we approve this, 225 people, can four support that level of capacity?
Yes, I mean, if we need to outsource, we will. But as of now, we do not see, because the nature of events, we are planning there, or any events that will be organized or happen there, will have a buffet kind of food facility. And then these people are only there to clean and, you know, what do you call them? To put the food back in the trays or refill stuff and that kind of stuff.
So are you contemplating utilizing outside caterers? Is that...
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Thanks, sir. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
However, if there is anyone here who would like to come forward and speak on this matter, now's your chance to do so. Seeing none, we will close public comment. Have a motion from council.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that council approve MP-22-05/CU-22-04 SS Entertainment LLC Event Facility with the conditions as stated by staff in numbers one, two, four, five, and six, and condition number three stating special event facility occupancy shall be limited to the lesser of no more than 225 people, or the final maximum occupancy approved by the fire marshal.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Hypes, a second by Councilman Dorito, and any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion to approve MP-22-05/CU-22-04 SS Entertainment LLC Event Facility, 5815 Windward Parkway with the conditions as read by staff and outlined by Councilman Hypes. If you're in favor, please vote yes; otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously. Congratulations.
Good luck to you.
Next item up on the agenda for public hearing this evening is MP-21-11 Ridge Road Holdings LLC. Director Cook, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm going to be recusing myself. My law partner, David Bellisle, is representing the applicant, so I will be recusing.
Thanks, sir. You may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. The next item is shown to you on the screen, and the submitted request, if approved, would allow for the construction of a two-story, 19,000-square-foot medical office over retail and a one-story, 1,950-square-foot medical office building on two and a half acres. A master plan amendment is requested to the Preston Ridge Master Plan to add the property to Pod M. Pod M is a small pod that's located just to the east of this property. Property zoned O and I. It's mostly undeveloped, except for when the extension of Morris Road was built through this property. The Preston Ridge Master Plan was approved in 1987 as a 500-acre mixed-use development, and it's approximately eight acres, Pod M, that they would be joining, was approved for office, institutional, and accessory retail uses with a maximum non-residential density of 18,000 square feet per acre. Also within Pod M, there's no limitation on the percentage of retail use as it relates to the overall development. If they were not locate, if this parcel was not added to the master plan amendment, they would be subject to a maximum of 25% retail. So that is not a requirement as, as part of the Preston Ridge Master Plan. And I'll put the site plan up here for you. The site plan, again, it depicts a two-story, 19,000-square-foot building, two levels, so the retail would be on the bottom floor with office on the top level. There's also a smaller medical office, it's 1,950 square feet, that's located on the south side of the property. And the original plan, which the applicant changed, had, did not include a lot of tree saves. So this particular plan does include a tree save area that you can see here, located in the middle. And then also, this property to the south includes a tree save area. Detention is located underground, under the parking lot, and then the detention on the south parcel is actually a walled detention pond. As part of the Morris Road development that was built in order to get to the assisted living that's located farther south, there was also 12 parking spaces built as a part of the development that was used by the Waffle House that's located here. So the parking will, some of the parking will be shared, and it's the, it includes the 12 parking spaces that are located just south of the Waffle House. As part of the recommended conditions, we are recommending that if this is approved, that we acquire, that the, the applicant be conditioned to give the city the right-of-way for the Morris Road section that was built. Because there is a parcel that's located just south of this, I'll show you. Here, so this is a parcel that's zoned CUP, and it allows office uses. And so without the right-of-way, there would not be access to this parcel, it would be landlocked. So that's part of the conditions that we, we have within our recommendation. They did submit the traffic study as part of the application. It shows that the proposed, proposed uses would generate approximately 35 morning peak hour trips and 75 p.m. peak hour trips. They also, as part of their citizen participation, they notified property owners within 500 feet. They did not receive any comments regarding their application. They also presented their plan at the citizen, at the community zoning information meeting, which was held on February 9, and there were no public comments at that meeting either. This was presented to the June 9 Planning Commission meeting. Staff recommended approval with nine different conditions, and there were no public comments at that particular meeting either. After discussion, the Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval with the nine conditions as recommended by staff, which are, number one, the 2.45-acre property shall be added to Pod M of the Preston Ridge Master Plan and limited to medical and professional office, and no more than 9,500 square feet of accessory retail, and limited to the uses listed, which are animal hospital, bakery, bank, barber shop, beauty shop, dry cleaning, pickup station, fitness studio, florist, laboratory, laundry, pet daycare, pet grooming, print shop, restaurant, and school, that's a commercial school. And two, sites shall be developed substantially as depicted on the submitted site plan labeled Exhibit A, except for modifications required to comply with the conditions below, and subject to meeting all city code requirements and conditions of zoning. And three, trees shall be saved as depicted on the submitted site plan labeled Exhibit A as approved by staff. And four, Building A shall have a minimum 20-foot height along Old Milton Parkway. Exterior building materials shall be comparable to the materials on nearby Preston Ridge office buildings with final approval by the DRB. And five, developers shall construct a six-foot sidewalk along the east side of the old Morris Road right-of-way connecting the Old Milton Parkway sidewalk to the Morris Road sidewalk. Existing sidewalk along Morris shall be removed and areas shall be planted with street trees. And six, buildings shall connect to the public sidewalk system. Seven, developers shall coordinate with the city and GDOT to provide the required landscape material and the 20-foot landscape strip along Old Milton Parkway. And we included this because there is an easement that GDOT has along Old Milton Parkway, so we want to make sure the applicant does coordinate with the Department of Transportation to make sure we get the 20-foot landscape strip planted. And eight, wall signs visible from Old Milton Parkway shall be limited to signage permitted for an office building and shall be for an office tenant. And nine, property owners shall dedicate Morris Road to the city as public right-of-way. And that concludes the Planning Commission recommendation. If you have any questions.
Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. I only have one question regarding the detention pond. Normally, we require landscaping around that. Is, is it such that that's not permissible, or is there some reason why that was not required?
They have a 10-foot landscape strip, so absolutely, that could be something that's added to where there's landscape screening around that detention pond, just to make sure that it's brought to the attention of the, the designers.
So which one would you think that best added to?
I would add that to number three. Trees shall be saved as depicted on the submitted site plan labeled Exhibit A as approved by staff. In addition, detention ponds shall require heavy landscape screening.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff on this item? Thank you, Ms. Cook. Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
Mayor, council, thank you for having us this evening. And representing the applicant today, and the applicant is a husband and wife, and the wife is Dr. Youssef, she's an endodontist. A smaller building that you see on the site is actually kind of their long-term dream. That's where she wants to have her practice. And then the front side of that is really just designed to help, you know, be an investment at the same time. So they live in the area, the investment, it'll be onsite and on property, but it's an endodontist office on the small building, medical office on top, as was stated, and then retail on, on the bottom. The, the staff conditions are fine and agreeable to the client. I did want to ask Councilman Mitchell, the detention you're talking about, you're talking on the smaller section, is that...
That's correct, on the Morris Road section.
And applicant is fine with, with that...
Okay.
...with that recommendation as well.
Thank you.
With that, I'm certainly open to any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Any other questions for the applicant? Thanks, sir.
Mayor, council, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
Yes, mayor, we have one public comment card for this item, Andy Ship. If you'd like to come forward, just state your name and address into the podium for us, and you can present to mayor and council.
Hey, how are you? My name's Andy Ship. I'm, my mailing address is PO Box 1375, Conyers, Georgia. I'm here representing Lee Burson. She owns the property to the immediate south. Really, I'm here not for or against the development, I'm here to represent or to ask that you include the condition number nine. Old Morris Road was removed, and when that happened, we lost our access. And so even though we have a road, technically, we can't use the road, so it's, we just would like it to be dedicated. And then that way, we have access to our property. The taxes didn't go down, but we lost access, so we'd like that back. So if we could get that back, we're happy.
Thank you, sir. That was the only public comment card we had, Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, sir.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this item, now's your chance. Seeing none, we will close public comment. I have a motion from council.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve MP-22-01 Bridge Road Holdings LLC slash Preston Ridge, subject to the staff conditions outlined with addendum to condition number three. To read, "Trees shall be saved as depicted on the subject submitted site plan labeled Exhibit A as approved by staff. In addition, detention ponds shall require heavy landscaping to be approved by city staff."
I'll second that. We have a motion by Councilman Dorito, a second by Councilman Mitchell. I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understood that number that you read.
Number three, mayor, as requested by...
Oh, no, I'm talking about the item number. I may have misheard you, but I believe the item was MP-21-11 Bridge Road Holdings.
It says here MP-22-01. I found the staff report.
There's a mix-up. Mine, mine also says 22, but...
So which is the correct?
Our attorney...
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah. Ms. Cook, to you. That's right, the agenda is different from the staff report.
The printed agenda is different than what I have on the website.
Apologies, it is MP-22-01. That's the advertised item.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Wanted to make sure we get this one right. Wanted to make sure we get this one right. Is everyone comfortable with the motion to approve and the conditions as outlined by Councilman Dorito? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, otherwise, vote accordingly. Councilman Dorito? And it does pass unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you, good luck.
Next item up on the agenda for public hearing is PH-22-04 slash Z-22-04. The Bridges Alpharetta, Webb Bridge Road. Mr. Webman, you once again have the floor.
Madewell Homes is the next item. They are requesting a change to previous conditions of zoning, as well as a rezoning to allow for the construction of six single-family detached homes within a gated subdivision, and that's on 7.83 acres. They're asking for a change to previous conditions of zoning related to file Z-1901 Walker 4360 Webb Bridge Road. And they're also asking for a rezoning for a portion of the property from CUP, Community Unit Plan, to R, which is minimum one-acre lots. Do have the overhead on, I'm sorry, the location map on the overhead, the property is located at 0 and 4430 Webb Bridge Road, which is near the southeast, which is just southeast of the intersection of Webb Bridge Road and Shirley Bridge Road. Proposed density on this development is .77 dwelling units per acre. This is an undeveloped property, it's wooded. The adjacent properties are the Broadlands subdivision located to the north and east. There are unplatted residential lots, as well as the Park Glen subdivision to the south. Webb Bridge Middle School is located to the west. And the Walker property, which is located at the corner of Webb Bridge and Shirley Bridge, is located to the north. The future land use designation of this property is low-density residential. Most of this property was rezoned to R, minimum one-acre lots, back in 2019. The applicant has acquired this property, 4430 Webb Bridge Road, and has requested to rezone that property to R, also to R, and then, of course, to amend the original site plan that was approved for the balance of the property to add this property into it. So, they are asking for, at a minimum, for changes to that site-specific condition. The applicant officially requested that all the previous conditions of zoning from that 2019 case be deleted. This is the property from Webb Bridge Road, so this is the current access off of Webb Bridge into the property. This is 4430 Webb Bridge Road, so this is the property just on the south side of the development. It does have an existing home on it. And this is just north of 4430 between the entrance and that home, it's wooded lot. This is the applicant's site plan, so there are six lots within this site plan off a new private road. This is a gated cul-de-sac street. Again, the acreage of the property is almost eight acres at 7.83 acres. The average lot size of these six lots is 1.01 acres. As you can see on the site plan, all the lots are oriented interior to the site, so nothing is oriented to Webb Bridge Road. I mentioned earlier, it is a gated community. There are five-foot sidewalks depicted on one side of the new street. There are tree saves. These red circles here are, represent tree saves. There are some that are off-site. The applicant is required to show some of the off-site trees within 30 feet of their boundary as well, to indicate that they wouldn't be impacting those. The stormwater pond on this property is positioned in the northeast corner of the property. This is the low point of the property. And we'll get into some of the conditions. The applicant has had a number of discussions with the adjacent property owners in the Broadlands subdivision. They were also part of the discussion back in 2019 when Mr. Walker rezoned this property. And we are recommending that some of those previous conditions of zoning remain with this if this application is approved. The applicant did provide a photographic example of the type of home that he would like to build within this development. This particular example represents a two-story home with primary exterior material being The applicants, we looked at the applicant's zoning proposal, and we believe that it is consistent with the future land use. The future land use is low-density, would allow an R12, R15. We're asking, the applicant is asking for R, minimum one-acre lot, so much lower density than what the future land use would allow. And it's consistent with the existing use of adjacent and nearby properties. We believe that the applicant's request for R has the least impact to those surrounding properties. And this development would exceed the minimum lot area, as well as the minimum lot width requirements of the adjacent subdivisions. We do recommend, if this is approved, addressing the aesthetics of the stormwater pond. So, that was one of the biggest issues that the adjacent neighbors had, was how this, what the stormwater pond looked like. There are some other conditions, which I will point out, that the applicant has agreed to do for the adjacent private residents, and I'll call those to your attention as I go through those. One condition that we are recommending remains from the 2019 case was the previous applicant on this property was agreeable to a 25-foot undisturbed buffer adjacent to the Broadlands subdivision, so along the north and east property lines. We are recommending that that condition remain. The applicant provided their citizen participation plan. They indicated that they met with the adjacent residents in the Broadlands subdivision on May 23rd. Some of the, most of the concerns that were voiced by those residents had to do with the stormwater management pond, but there were some concerns about impacts to trees and some hazardous trees. At that meeting, the applicant agreed to, to no walls on the stormwater pond. They agreed to provide evergreen plantings around the pond to screen that pond from the neighbors. And they also agreed to slow the flow of runoff from the pond onto the neighboring properties. There was a hazardous tree that was leaning towards an adjacent property in the Broadlands. There's a condition specifically dealing with that. And then, there is a new condition that I will bring to your, to your attention as I go through the conditions, that the applicant agreed to remove a tree, an impacted tree on an adjacent property, and I'll call that one out. City staff also received some similar concerns from the adjacent residents and email correspondence. And we also heard those same concerns at the community zoning information meeting on May 11th. This item went before the Planning Commission on June 9th. There were several public comments at that meeting, concerns over the appearance of the stormwater management pond, impact to off-site trees, removal of a leaning tree, clarification on the aesthetics of the stormwater facility. And at the end of the evening, Planning Commission recommend unanimous approval, subject to staff conditions, as well as adding in some conditions to address comments received from the neighboring, the adjacent neighborhood. Planning Commission recommended approval, subject to the following conditions. Condition one is the site plan-specific condition. And I will note that the date of the site plan should be changed here. So, it says revised 5/9/2022, that should be 6/9/2022. There were a couple of tree saves shown on the 5/9 plan that were removed, that will be removed with the Webb Bridge Road projects. So, those trees would not be able to save, they're marked with Xs right in this location here. So, this site plan was updated, so anywhere the site plan is referenced, it should be 6/9. Condition two, subdivision shall be gated, subject to final approval by staff. Condition three, homes visible from Webb Bridge Road shall be 75% or more, brick or stone, as approved by staff. Home elevation shall be substantially similar to the submitted photograph labeled Exhibit A, with final approval by staff. Homes shall have three-sided architectural materials, except those rear elevations visible from Webb Bridge Road shall have similar architectural details and materials as the front facade, as approved by staff. Condition four, addresses the 20-foot decorative landscape strip along Webb Bridge Road. Condition five, addresses the 10-foot minimum landscape strip required along the new private street. Condition six, requires a project entrance to have decorative ornamental plantings. Condition seven, addresses the common area, so there's a common area on the south side of this new street here, requiring that that area be planted with a mix of deciduous and evergreen landscape material to meet the planning requirements of the 10-foot landscape strip, six-foot planter, and five-foot perimeter landscape strip. So, basically, we're allowing them to put all those regulations together into a landscaped area in order to screen this development from the property to the south. Condition eight, per the original conditions, minimum 25-foot undisturbed buffer replanted where sparse with evergreen trees and shrubs shall be provided along the common property line with the adjacent Broadlands subdivision. Condition nine, addresses the stormwater management facility, requiring that it be an amenity to the development. The developer shall work with adjacent neighbors to make the stormwater management facility aesthetically pleasing, no walls, earthen bank, and screened with evergreens, with final approval by staff. Dragonfly-attracting plants shall be utilized around the pond as a means of mosquito control. Apparently, dragonflies love to eat mosquitoes, so any plants that attract dragonflies are good to have around detention ponds. At a minimum, an aesthetically pleasing stormwater facility shall include, A, a variety of water-loving vegetation planted in and around the pond; B, a pond design that is attractive when empty, no muddy areas that would promote mosquitoes and unpleasant smells; and C, a natural or organic shape to the pond. 10, per a private agreement, the rate of stormwater runoff shall be slowed by 10% if feasible over the current flow from the pond to neighboring properties. Condition 11, developers shall dedicate necessary right-of-way to accommodate the city's Webb Bridge Road improvements. Condition 12, developers shall improve the new private street with a minimum five-foot sidewalk on one side of the street, minimum six-foot planter planted with street trees, and decorative pedestrian lighting, as approved by staff. Street scape modifications shall be permitted for the purpose of tree preservation or utility conflicts, as approved by staff. 13, fencing visible from Webb Bridge Road shall be a continuation of the existing five-board horse fencing. Unfinished wood fences and decks shall not be visible from Webb Bridge Road. That condition is also a carryover from the 2019 zoning. 14, home footprints shall be laid out to minimize impacts to existing tree canopy, as approved by staff. Condition 15, specimen trees shall be preserved as depicted on the site plan prepared by Travis Pruitt and Associates, Inc., revised, and that date should be 6/9/2022. Condition 16, developers shall identify and save additional tree groupings and trees of quality outside required stream buffers, as approved by staff. 17, drainage's meant rock swell material shall require final approval by staff. Drainage swell shall be maintained by the HOA. And just to explain what the drainage is meant, rock swell material, so this development is called by the applicant, "The Bridges." And it's called "The Bridges" because there is a, there's a swell that runs through, multiple swells that run through the development. So, if you see this area here, and then, leading up to the pond, and there's one on the south side of the new road that comes around here. So, this will be a decorative feature on each of the lots, and there'll be bridges over the driveway to each of the home sites over top of that swell. Condition 18, developers shall make reasonable efforts to obtain easements to tie stormwater pond outfall through a pipe directly into a downstream structure, rather than releasing upgrade, as approved by staff. If tie-in is not possible, measures shall be used to prevent concentrated flow at the property line, as approved by staff. This is similar to the residential development out on Kimble Bridge that you saw a month or two ago. We just want to make sure that, if possible, we want to encourage the developer to make a direct tie-in for the storm, stormwater pond outfall. Condition 19, utility structures, headwalls, et cetera, shall be finished with decorative stone if visible from the Broadlands subdivision. Condition 20, no more than 10% of the residential units or one dwelling unit shall be permitted to be rented. Condition 21, if fencing is utilized around the stormwater facility, fencing shall be five-board horse fence to match the fence required along Webb Bridge Road. Condition 22, per a private agreement, developers shall remove the large hazardous tree leaning towards 121 West Chester Way. And we do recommend a new condition number 23 since the Planning Commission meeting. A neighbor, as well as the applicant, have come to an agreement to have a tree removed that is off-site, that will be impacted from the construction of the stormwater pond. And so, that new condition number 23 would read, "Per a private agreement, developer shall remove Boundary Tree Number Nine located in the rear yard of 510 Cambridge Court." And I'll go ahead and read 23 again. So, new condition number 23, "Per a private agreement, developers shall remove Boundary Tree Number Nine located in the rear yard of 510 Cambridge Court." And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions for staff at this time? Councilman Dorito?
Mr. Webman, just to clarify, and I think you changed it, you know, intentionally, you said you had to change the date for number one condition to June 9th. And then, in your presentation of the conditions, it was number 15 that you also changed. Did you mean to do that as well for that one?
Yes. One and 15 should change to 6/9/22.
And then, I want to speak to condition 11 for a minute, and I don't know if Pete Sukovitz needs to add any comments to this, but just to have the city council understand what right-of-way we're looking to obtain if this is approved with this condition.
I don't, I believe the applicant has talked to Public Works, and they actually show, so this kind of cross-hatched area here along Webb Bridge Road is what they indicate, what the applicant's engineer indicates would be the right-of-way necessary for our Webb Bridge Road project. But, of course, we do have the Public Works Director here this evening.
Yeah, was Pete, could I?
I don't know if he can verify.
And we, I was out there with Pete about a week and a half ago, whenever, we looked at the Webb Bridge Road improvement project, and we were looking at right-of-ways required to do the project. And this particular property we were near, and I know we spoke about a 45-foot construction easement, and then, we talked about a, you know, a regular easement for the sidewalk and things that would be needed in the design plan. So, if you can address what we're actually asking for, the developer to donate to the city?
So, the right-of-way drawings appear to be from the previous typical section. If you recall, we went to a six-foot beauty strip and a 10-foot sidewalk. This looks like it's the right-of-way from the six, four-foot beauty strip and eight-foot wide sidewalk. We were going to have tree grates, if you remember, along the corridor, and that got a little too expensive. So... So on top of that, then, there is additional, from the existing right-of-way, a forty-five-foot temporary construction easement that is required on our current drawings right now. And we just started the right-of-way process, that phase. So the drawing here, this shows, the right-of-way's off a hair, a couple of feet probably, but what isn't depicted is the temporary construction easement that's needed to grade out to accommodate the sidewalk.
And that's all we need?
Correct.
Or just the construction easement?
And we'll need permanent right-of-way as well.
And permanent right-of-way. So should this condition be more specific as to what we're actually asking the developer to donate to the city?
It can, yes. We easily could coordinate that. We could coordinate that with our existing. I mean, we're in the process of the right-of-way acquisition now, so things change here and there. We shave things off a little bit here and there to make things work. But the grading, due to the slope, the property slopes off as you get off Webbridge Road, so we're going to have to play catch-up in order to accommodate the grades, or a retaining wall has to be installed.
Mr. Woodman, I'm just trying to be clear there, so there's no confusion if this was to be approved with this condition, that there's no back and forth with the developer of what they actually committed to and what the city anticipated because of the construction easement needed temporary and the actual right-of-way that would be required by the city if this condition was approved. So I don't know if we have to just clarify that a little bit.
I'll go look if I can find the drawing that they have.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Will.
Mr. Woodman, mine's a quick question. On number twenty-one, it says if fencing is utilized. Do we not know if it's required?
So the city does not require fencing around a stormwater pond. All we require is landscape screening. Typically, the insurance companies, the HOA, will want insurance on the development, and they're going to require the fencing. So, but it's completely up to them. It's not a requirement that we can impose. In fact, condition number twenty-one was added by the planning commission to the conditions, and the applicant had indicated at the planning commission meeting that they were okay with adding that.
Yeah, I saw a letter from one of the other subdivisions requesting it, and then I saw if again, and I was just, okay, all right.
Yeah, it was, we didn't want to say that the fence is required because our regulations do not require it. It was just that, and the applicant had indicated if their insurance required the fencing, then they would like to do it.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Woodman, I just wanted to follow up on your condition twenty-three, I believe it was, with the additional agreement for removal of the tree. I'm just curious, I'd spoken to someone about this tree. Where is that located on the site plan you have up there?
So that tree sits right about here where I drew that little dot. So it is on this, it is on private property, the adjacent private property at five-ten Cambridge Court.
So that is the tree that's indicated there with the round circle?
The one that's indicated with a round circle qualifies as a specimen tree. This tree does not qualify as a specimen tree because it's not in good condition. So it is a seventy-inch tree. It's a very large tree. I can't remember right off the top of my head what type of oak it is. I believe it's an oak.
I think I was told a white oak.
Yeah, and it was struck by lightning. And so the arborist for the applicant said that the condition of the tree was not, was not good. And then we also asked, the property owner hired her own arborist to assess the condition of the tree, and then the city arborist also went out and looked at the tree. And I believe that all three were in agreement that the condition of the tree was not, was not good. This tree will be impacted as seventy-inch tree. The critical root zones go out pretty far from that point here. It would be impacted by the installation of the stormwater pond. So this resident just wants to make sure that they're not stuck with having to remove a tree that is even impacted more than it is currently.
I am familiar a little bit, so I just wanted to make sure I could visualize the tree we were speaking about when I talked to the adjacent property owner. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, sir. Well done. Would the applicant like to come forward? If you will, just state your name and mailing address.
Good evening. My name is Tori Young, and I reside at two-one-zero-nine Commerce Street in Alpharetta, Georgia. Thanks so much for your time and for being here. Felt like Michael did a great job just thoroughly going through everything, had a very good, productive last meeting, had a couple of moments and opportunities to meet with neighbors. I felt like that was probably the most important piece of everything. We tried to keep it as straight down the middle, simple within the zoning that's currently there, and everything else basically just impacted neighbors, and we were trying to arrive at a point that would make sense for everyone and keep everybody happy. And I think we've achieved that. Like I said, Michael did a great job kind of covering everything. If you have side questions, happy to do my best at answering.
I do want to follow up on Councilman Dorito's question. Are you familiar with the easement and the road construction and all that?
I am. Yeah, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there. I was out of town the day that he took his time and came out there, and thank you for that. I am familiar with it. I've spoken with our engineers. Obviously, a little bit of this is over my pay grade, but I do understand that it doesn't impact what we're trying to achieve. It does help the future use for the city and Webbridge Road. We're understanding that and are willing to, you know, abide by what needs to happen to achieve all of that. So, yes, I am familiar with it.
Any questions for the applicant? Councilman Hype?
Mr. Young, just for clarity, you are in agreement with the twenty-two conditions plus the new twenty-third condition?
I am.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thanks, sir. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do. Amber Brannon. If you'd like to come forward and just state your name and address into the podium, and then you may address Mayor and Council.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amber Brannon, and I live with my family at five-one-zero Cambridge Court. That's adjacent to the proposed Madwell Development. I just kind of wanted to reiterate, represent my neighborhood of all the conditions that Michael has gone through. We sent a letter to the planning commission prior to that meeting outlining our primary concerns, which is the aesthetics of the detention pond. That's the, I think, the biggest issue that our neighborhood has, and based on that letter, they made recommendations that the developer will work with adjacent neighbors to make the detention pond attractive. That twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer between our properties to be planted where sparse, and then additional specifics such as the, as Michael mentioned, the dragonfly-attracting plants to help with mosquito control, and some other things to make it, you know, kind of like it should be back there and not that we have a new thing that we're looking at. That's, the conditions that Michael read through, I know there's a lot of them, but those number eight, nine, let's see, number eight, nine, ten, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three are very important to us. And the new item, condition number twenty-three, is specifically important to me because that is my boundary tree number nine in the rear of my property. And like Michael said, I've submitted an arborist letter as well, further stating the poor condition of the tree, and that it will further, with the further disruption and encroachment of its roots, it will accelerate the decline of the tree. And the city arborist agreed on its condition as well. And I've reached out to Mr. Young. As you know, he also has agreed to remove it, and I just wanted to say that the unknowns of the future of the tree are really heavy on my family, so this removal is very important to us. And my hope is that if this project is approved, all staff recommendations regarding the detention pond, the twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer, and the boundary tree number nine will remain, and if any changes or additions are made, that it will further protect our neighboring community. Mr. Young builds very beautiful homes, and we understand that this development is probably our best-case scenario. And he's been very neighborly to work with, and we support his development. He's also very open to listen to whatever we have to say. But with that being said, we still wish that these conditions are in place to, you know, protect us during the development, and then once it's completed and he's no longer around. So thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment cards, Ms. Shapiro?
We do not, Mayor.
However, if you are here and would like to come forward and speak on this item, now is your chance to do so. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from Council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, make a motion that Council approve PH-two-two-zero-four slash Z-two-two-zero-four, the bridges, Webbridge Road, and include, as part of the motion, the twenty-two conditions set forth in the staff report modified as follows. In condition number one, the site plan date is changed from May nine, two thousand twenty-two to June nine, two thousand twenty-two. And in condition fifteen, the date of the site plan is also changed from May nine, two thousand twenty-two to June nine, two thousand twenty-two. And to add, as an additional condition, number twenty-three, per a private agreement, developer shall remove boundary tree number nine located in the rear yard of five-one-zero Cambridge Court.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Hype, I believe the second was by Councilman Binder. Any discussion?
Sorry, Mr. Woodman or Mr. Sukovitz, do you have a suggested change to that one? I'd like to make a friendly amendment if they recommend that we change that to be more specific on the right-of-way.
James should be pulling up. I found the, these aren't the right-of-way drawings, they're the construction drawings, and there is a date on them. There should be, James, where the scale is to the right, revisions. Where it says pond, go to your lower right-hand corner. Go on. There, five-twenty, twenty-two.
Can we just reference this?
Yes, sir.
So how do we reference this?
You can reference those, the construction plans prepared by pond with revised date of five-twenty, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to condition number eleven, developer shall dedicate necessary right-of-way to accommodate the city's Webbridge Road improvements as depicted on the plan you just took off the screen.
The only thing I would add is construction easement as well.
No, the plan's gone that I was going to refer to. I don't know.
While we're working on that.
If, would it be better, since I do, I do think we had in the wording, construction easements, I know we've had that in the past on Rucker. We approve things, and then there's misunderstandings. But if we reference that document, and if there's any revision on that document, then that kind of absolves.
So right now, this is the document we're working off of, and we're meeting with each individual property owner as we go through, along the corridor, who's got questions, comments, or concerns. So things are being slightly tweaked or modified where we can, but this is our baseline that we're going off of.
Maybe I can pop that over to our city attorney. If we reference a document and the document's revised, what does that do to this condition? As opposed to saying, give us the construction and?
If you're referencing it by date, then I think you'd probably be tied to what it is as of the date. I mean, if you were to say that they have to dedicate the necessary right-of-way and construction easements, as shown on the plans on file with Public Works, maybe that would provide enough wiggle room rather than saying the date.
Okay, thank you. So that would be my friendly amendment. Developer shall dedicate necessary right-of-way to accommodate the city's Webbridge Road improvements as required by Webbridge Road improvements with Public Works' approval?
I would say as shown on the plans on file with Public Works, to include the construction easements.
Okay. I really should write this down.
Do you want me to say it again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless you want to write it and state it, and?
I'll just say it, and if it accomplishes what you want, that's fine. Developer shall dedicate the necessary right-of-way and temporary construction easement to accommodate the city's Webbridge Road improvements, as shown on the plans on file with the Department of Public Works.
What she just said.
Yes.
So you made the motion correct. Do you accept that friendly amendment?
With the mayor's permission, this specificity being added after the motion, if I could, with your permission, have Mr. Young come back up and comment on it.
Mr. Young, if you don't mind. Just trying to clarify if new terms would be amenable to you.
Yeah, you know?
Have you seen what we're talking about?
I, yes, I have. Respectfully, I feel like we've tried to do everything like so neutral on all of this. We've tried to be progressive in, you know, our efforts to reach out. Councilman Dorito was on-site. I'm fine with it, but I just feel like there's an awful lot of focus on this at this point, that now, all of a sudden, what about the ambiguities, right? We felt like we needed to hang a left through your property and take a portion that we had no idea was going to happen, you know, have to have at some point. You know, the spirit of it, absolutely. We understand the road needs to go through there, there needs to be widening, there needs to be access to the greenway. Sidewalks are great. We have no problem with that. So, you know, I feel like I'm in a little bit of a weird spot, you know, because no one up here knows what the ultimate outcome's going to be, but we're all working within the spirit of trying to get this done properly. So I don't, I don't really, I don't know. Like, I'm not digging my heels in to, like, object by any stretch. It's just very ambiguous.
Hold on, I'm just trying to get an answer to Councilman Hype's question. I understand. Thank you. Councilman Dorito?
Yeah, Mr. Young, I'm not trying to make this difficult. This is going to be a beautiful project for the city, and I'm very supportive of it. I happen to be out there with one of your associates.
Yes.
Who wasn't even aware that the property was going to be donated to the city.
I was aware, so that's?
No, no, but I'm just telling you what happened that day. He expressed concerns about it, and I'll leave it at that. So my intention is to make sure that there's no ambiguity after the fact with any of your associates or people, and we get into this back-and-forth stuff. I'm just trying to be clear as to what that condition means. For you, too, you need to understand it fully. That was my only intentions. If Council feels like we're going a little bit too far with this, that's the reason why I brought it up, because there was confusion the day that I was out on the site. From one of your associates. It was surprised that it was passed by the planning commission. So I'm trying to be, not create a conflict in the future, that's all.
Totally understand.
Councilman Binder?
And I can definitely understand the concern of the last-second ads, but really, it's ambiguity for me on number eleven, and I've had this from personal experience on, or council experience on Rucker Road for this. So I want to make sure it's clear so that there is no ambiguity when we say, okay, come here. So eleven, I think just saying necessary right-of-way and construction easements would be fine enough for me. But I've had it where things have been posted on the streets, and applicants come in and say, oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's fine, and it's there, and then we've had to try to mitigate, you know, damages and get lawyers involved and on there.
So there's a better way of saying it, and I apologize for interrupting. Let's get to a point that we're all in lockstep with. We're doing a lot of work in the city, so the last thing that I'm going to do is lawyer up and make things difficult. I want this to be a good relationship, like, period.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, so, that's truly where I stand. So, you guys know the spirit of where I'm coming from, so if you want to come up with, like, the final wording, and then I will comply with that.
One point of clarification. So, part of the ambiguity was when we went from a specific plan to potential plans. Would you be willing to accept a condition based on this particular drawing? And then if the drawings change, then it becomes just like any other easement, right-of-way acquisition process?
That's fine.
Does that seem like a reasonable solution?
I just know how we easily revise drawings, and then so, once we do that...
I understand. I'm just trying to remove the ambiguity. We can still change it, and there's nothing to keep us from changing it, although we've already changed it, like, 12 times over the last five years. We could still change it again, but I'm just saying that at least he and his partners know what they're committing to donating.
I would, personally, I would rather just keep it as is with 11 that he agreed with than add it, than give it to a specific drawing.
If I may, would that be you withdrawing your second, then?
I don't believe I, I'm still in agreement with what you gave.
Oh, somebody made a friendly amendment.
I did, I don't think we had so...
My bad.
So, it's up to you and Councilman Binder whether you want to accept the friendly amendment.
Yeah. I respectfully will reject the friendly amendment.
Fair enough. Okay, so, we're back to the original motion that was made. Is everyone clear on that? So, those were the terms outlined here, as outlined by staff, and number 23 with the private agreement to remove the additional tree.
Does a friendly amendment even require a second?
Doesn't require a second, but y'all have to approve a friendly amendment, or it's not friendly.
Hostile.
Okay. So, is everyone clear on the motion? The motion was to approve with 22 conditions and the additional 23rd condition. All those in favor? If you vote yes, otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously.
Perfect. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you working with the neighbors.
Yes, sir.
As we mentioned before, the next item that was on the agenda was deferred, won't be heard this evening. So, the next item up on the agenda is MP-22-06/ CLUP-22-01/ Z-22-07/ V-22-11. These are homes. Director Cook, you have the floor.
Mayor and Council, the next item before you is shown to you on the screen, and the applicant, Beazer Holmes, is requesting a comprehensive land use plan amendment, master plan amendment, rezoning, and variances in order to allow the construction of 43 for-sale single-family townhomes on 6.2 acres within the North Point overlay. The proposed density is 6.94 dwelling units per acre, and a master plan amendment is requested to amend the Delta Credit Union Master Plan in order to add the for-sale attached to the list of the permitted uses for the Delta Credit Union Master Plan. The rezoning is requested from O&amp;I to R8AD, as well as a change to the comprehensive land use plan designation of corporate office to high-density residential. A few variances are requested, which we'll go over, to modify the North Point overlay site regulations. And let me put the site plan up here. So, the property to the west is actually a dental office. Of course, the access ramp to 400 is located to the north. And then also to the south is the Best Buy Shopping Center. So, the shopping center is located here at this location. There's also, when Best Buy was built, there's actually some steps and some access to the back of that building, which you'll see in some recommendations, how we recommend that there is a connection. The Delta Credit Union Master Plan was originally approved in 2006, and it had amendments to a reversion clause in 2009 and 2011. At one time, it was actually approved for a hotel on that property, but right now, the only, the current approvals are for around 120,000 square feet of office at the density that's allowed there, and up to 10-story height for an office building. The applicant does request a few variances in order to meet the North Point overlay, or they can't meet the North Point overlay, and I'll show you those variances they're requesting. So, when we were going through the approval of the North Point overlay, we did specify that you had to have certain blocks that were created. So, if you're thinking about along North Point Parkway, you have the greater, the longer shopping centers. So, we wanted to make sure if they were redeveloped, that you had a block that was created, as well as connections over to adjacent properties. So, they are requesting a variance from that particular requirement within the overlay, which staff is recommending that that's something that makes sense for this particular property, because you don't want to have access to the Fulton County Maintenance Facility that's already developed, that's located to the east of the site. Of course, you would have to, you're crossing Rock Mill, the Best Buy is located here, so it didn't make sense to include the required blocks. The other variance that the applicant is requesting is to allow up to 42 feet in height for the townhomes. The overlay states 35 feet for residential, so they are requesting a 42-foot height. And the other variance is to allow sidewalks on only one side of the street, so this is considered an internal street, and so they are requesting that they're only required to build the sidewalk on the north side of the street. This also is something that made sense for staff, because it is such a small street without that future connection, of course, with the Fulton Maintenance Facility. Again, there's 43 for-sale townhome units. They are asking for approval for gated access, although you don't see gated access shown on this plan. They are asking for approval in case they want to be able to gate that. Townhomes are three stories, 42 feet. They do meet the required setbacks. Originally, there was other variances that they were requesting, and those have been removed. They had variances where they would have parking in between the roadway and the units. Those variances have been removed. They do have a 25-foot undisturbed buffer provided adjacent to the Fulton County Schools property, and a 60-foot buffer is required adjacent to the Georgia 400 access ramp. And in fact, there's about 100 feet, when you look at the existing right-of-way along the Georgia 400 ramp. So, with the 60-foot required undisturbed buffer and the 40-foot that's required, 100 feet in the, at the smallest section, it's actually a little greater as you get towards the corner of Haynes Bridge and the ramp. They do meet the required civic space, as well as the amenity space, so they have their internal amenity space. This is something that's required also as we encourage and develop residential within the North Point overlay. So, the amenity space has a fire pit, as well as community gardens. And just to remind everybody, the North Point overlay does require a ecodistrict points, and one of the ways that you can gain those points is to put the community gardens, which they've included. They've also added a walking trail, and that is something else that's added and allowed within the North Point overlay. And at the corner, they have saved a large tree save area, and those are mostly whiteoaks, hence the name for the, that they're using for the whiteoaks. So, they do meet the requirements for the civic space, as well as the amenity space. They did submit a traffic study. The traffic study shows that with the 43 townhomes, it would generate approximately 24 morning peak hour trips and 29 peak hour trips for the development. They also, we also checked with Fulton County Schools, and the proposed townhomes would increase school enrollment, and we did provide confirmation from Fulton County Schools. It can be assumed that the proposed development could house approximately four to 18 school-aged They also notified property owners within 500 feet. They did not receive any comments on this application, and we had the community zoning information meeting, which is our virtual meeting. We did have a few comments from residents that stated, "Are townhomes really needed?" And Alpharetta, they talked about the traffic and possible impacts to schools, as well as questions regarding the price points of the townhomes. This item was considered at the June 9 Planning Commission meeting. Staff recommended approval, subject to 24 conditions. And, you know, I did not put the elevations, so I've got to show you the elevations before I go to the conditions. Apologize for that. I'll put that up here. So, it is a mix of the brick and siding, and it does meet our North Point overlay. So, the recommendation with, is approval with 24 conditions. Number one, the 6.2-acre property shall be zoned R8D and shall be developed substantially as depicted on the plan prepared by BGE dated 5/25/22, except for modifications required to comply with these conditions. However, lot yield depicted is not guaranteed and subject to meeting all city code requirements and conditions of zoning. Two, the comprehensive land use plan designation of the property shall be high-density residential. Three, dwelling for-sale attached shall be listed as a permitted use in the Delta Community Credit Union Master Plan with a maximum density of 6.94 dwelling units per acre. Four, development may be gated. Five, deals with the building setbacks. Six, architecture. Seven, the ecodistrict points shall be substantially similar to the description provided on the site plan prepared by BGE dated 5/25/22. As approved by staff, developers shall provide detailed information at LDP and building permit regarding compliance with each requested ecodistrict measure. Number eight, regarding the community garden. Nine, minimum 0.7 acres of civic space shall be developed at the corner of Haynes Bridge Road and Rock Mill Road, which shall include a decorative hardscape, landscape, and North Point Ecodistrict Monument or District Threshold. A unique ecodistrict monument shall require approval by the Cultural Arts Commission. Hardscape, landscape, and monument district thresholds shall be maintained by the HOA. And 10, minimum 1.5 acres of open space shall be reserved and improved substantially as depicted on the site plan prepared by BGE dated 5/25/22. HOA shall be responsible for the maintenance of all open space areas. And 11, green stormwater design techniques shall be employed to address runoff reduction as approved by staff. 12 deals with privacy fences. 13, connectivity for the townhomes. 14, the internal street requirements, streetscape. And 15, developers shall improve the Haynes Bridge Road streetscape as follows. Minimum six-foot planter planted with street trees, eight-foot concrete sidewalk, and decorative pedestrian lighting. Final approval by staff. In lieu of tree grates, the soil area around street trees shall be planted with evergreen ornamental grasses, ground covers, and/or shrubs. Street trees and landscape strip materials shall alternate on both sides of the sidewalk as approved by staff. 16, those are the improvements to Rock Mill streetscape. 17, developers shall provide an enhanced pedestrian crossing across Rock Mill Road at Haynes Bridge Road and at the entrance to the Fulton County Schools Maintenance Facility, which shall include the North Point ecodistrict leaf pattern pavement markings. Enhanced crossings shall be eligible for impact fee credits as approved by staff. And just to remind people what I'm talking about, this is part of that creative placemaking plan. So, the requirement is the crosswalk that would go across Rock Mill over to Best Buy that they use the standards that we had approved for the North Point Creative Placemaking 18, minimum 25-foot undisturbed buffer shall be provided along the east property line. 19, Georgia 400 buffer shall be planted where sparse. And 20, minimum 10-foot landscape strips shall be required along the private road B. Landscape strips and buffers shall be exclusive of utilities and easements, except that if Fulton County requires an unencumbered easement, shrubs shall replace tree requirements on one side of the internal street. 21, pedestrian amenities, including pathways, lighting, and benches, should be included throughout the development. 22, trees shall be preserved as depicted on the site plan dated 5/25/22. Tree save areas shall be thinned out, cleaned up, and replanted with landscaping materials, not additional trees as approved by staff, and that's because the canopy is so large of these whiteoaks, you really wouldn't want to add additional trees and disturb that root system. 23, site plans shall comply with the Fire Marshal requirements, IFC Appendix D. 24, no more than 10% of the residential units shall be permitted to be rented as recorded in the HOA's declarations and covenants. And that concludes staff presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Any questions for staff on this item? Councilman Will?
Director Cook, this is a little off the wall here, but is there any future plans for some kind of pedestrian connectivity to get over to the potential new North Point project?
So, right now, it's difficult to cross here in this area.
That's kind of my...
Yeah, so, right now...
I just feel like people are going to start walking, and we got a traffic issue.
Yeah. They would have to actually go down Haynes Bridge Road and then cross over. You can cross at the light farther down here. This is probably a good... But it is farther. There's no plans that I'm aware of where there would be a cross at this location. The only requirement we had is that you had that pedestrian connection over to, behind Best Buy. Don't think that's going to stay a Best Buy for, I mean, it could, but they'll probably add additional uses and restaurant uses. So, I think that this is probably going to become something maybe more denser in the future, so it would connect over to other uses that could serve...
Okay. All right.
With restaurant and retail.
Other questions for staff? Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you. Ms. Cook, the, I want to make sure, by right, they're allowed a 10-story building, office building, right?
Yes, and it's zoned for office and up to 10 stories in height.
Okay, which would be much more intensive as far as traffic.
Yes, and I should have mentioned that, of course, with the townhomes that are proposed, that the traffic is much lower than if it was developed as an office use.
I think it was 300-something daily trips, is that right? 308 daily traffic?
That sounds correct. I'd have to review, but yes, the office is definitely more trips than the residential.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Ms. Cook, I do have a question, but it's probably better addressed by Director Sosavich. I'm just curious about future improvements with GDOT along Georgia 400 there, especially, you know, I think there is some value in protecting the tree cover at that intersection on the on-ramp to 400 North. But my guess is there's going to be a giant concrete wall there anyway when GDOT finishes their project, so if you could address any of that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, this is the on-ramp, correct? Yeah. Right here, so, 400 works should be further to the, we'll call it, north of the ramp, so I don't anticipate, based on the drawings I've seen, the conceptual drawings I've seen, any improvements, substantial improvements occurring in that on-ramp.
So, they're adding the additional four lanes on Georgia 400, and you've got residential right there.
Correct, yes. The, they're going to be working on the outside, but it should not impact the on-ramp.
So, they won't be coming in and putting in a sound barrier to protect the residential along Georgia 400 there?
That I don't know, because I do not know the actual distance they're going to be, which they'll have their noise studied for when they do the formal design.
Okay.
Unfortunately, they did not show the, where in the conceptual drawings where the sound barriers were going to be. That was going to go, be determined when the design team got together, and they actually had the actual location of the improvements occurring.
Do you need this?
I understand that. I'm just, going down 400 on a daily basis, right through Sandy Springs, and all you see are concrete barriers the entire stretch.
Correct, yes. And if, I think they are, unfortunately, our QRP hasn't been issued yet. It's actually, so it's hard to say what's going on, but right now, they haven't identified all the locations.
Okay. Just curious.
Start with that.
No, that's...
Start with that.
No, that's all right. I knew it wasn't our project, but I just thought I'd ask. Any other questions for staff at this time? Thank you, Ms. Cook. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers Julie Sellers with Dillard Sellers, 1776 Peachtree Street in Atlanta. Here on behalf of Beazer Homes, I do have Scott Butler, who's the Division VP with Beazer with me tonight, and our engineer Blaine Coleman with BGE, in case there are any technical questions that you all have that I'm unable to answer. I'll jump right into it. As always, you know, Kathy did a great job. We have appreciated working with the staff. Our site plan is certainly different, which you see today, based on some collaboration with the staff and feedback to get to where we are today. I want to preface my remarks by saying, we don't take this application lightly, and we know that the city doesn't take it lightly either when we're talking about master plan changes and when we're talking about comprehensive plan changes. I was asked at the Planning Commission by the Chair, you know, what's a compelling reason? You know, we don't take these lightly, and we want to hear a compelling reason. And so I do think that we've gathered some additional data and information. We did have the unanimous support from the Planning Commission. So I want to start with the master plan amendment. What you see on your screen shows the Delta Credit Union Master Plan. When this was originally conceived, it was a 10-story office building with a parking deck and then a 10,000-square-foot other building. What you see on the right-hand side of your screen is what, how that has been modified. This is now the Fulton County Maintenance Facility. And so this master plan cannot come to fruition, because the parcel's basically been carved up, and we've got the maintenance facility there, which is not going away anytime soon. So we are seeking a master plan amendment to allow for the residential use. The second is the comp plan, and I know that this is a comp plan that was recently approved in the fall after a lot of consideration and hard work. The Horizon 2040, I think, has support for why changing this land use designation makes sense. And I pointed out two specific things in the comp plan that support approval of this application. Housing. You cannot live in metro Atlanta without reading, I feel like now it's probably on a daily basis. You know, housing is increasingly becoming a crisis for us. We need more housing. I have done work in Alpharetta, and I know we want quality housing, and that is the development that you have before you. When we look at housing and looking at how can we get more attainable, I'm not even going to stand up here and say affordable. Right now, with construction costs, with land costs, it is expensive to build and buy homes. So I would say this would be a more attainable community than others located in other parts of the city. There is absolutely support in the comp plan that recognizes Alpharetta has got to address housing in the city, and it is a priority for you all as the city's decision-makers. The second thing in the comp plan that was recognized is the office and retail vacancies. That was significant enough of an issue that it was highlighted in the comp plan as something the city wanted to focus on. What we are asking you to do is to change one particular parcel from the corporate office designation to high-density residential. And I would say that your staff has done a remarkable job preparing the comprehensive plan. It is not feasible for any staff in any jurisdiction to actually go parcel by parcel by parcel. So you look at it with a bit broader brush, a larger planning view when we're looking at making these determinations. And so that is why we have the process for cases where we've got compelling reasons to make that change, and we do believe that the change being requested of you tonight does have a compelling basis. It is supported by the comprehensive plan's focus on addressing housing and looking at the office and retail vacancies. The third component is our rezoning request. We are asking to rezone from O&amp;I to R88 for the townhome community. This again supports the city's goal of having more for-sale housing options for residents. This site has not been developed for an office, and if there was a market there, it certainly could have been. What you see on the left of your screen is a small map that shows some areas surrounding Haynesbridge. There's approximately 2 million square feet of office space that's been approved for development. I am not here telling you that I don't think you should approve offices in the city, but I know that it has to be strategic, and it needs to be looked at in a holistic way with what the market is demanding and will be continuing to demand, and that's more of the mixed use. And that's really what we are creating here by introducing residential use in the North Point area is additional ways to come up. Mixed use doesn't have to be integrated all on one site. It can be created by using these undeveloped parcels and adding a new use such as the residential density. Another approved plan by the city that supports this application is the North Point LCI. That supports this application and recognizes that townhomes on page 34 are an extremely viable form of for-sale residential appropriate to the North Point area. The walkability adding additional residential is also noted in the LCI. Creating pocket parks, I'll touch on that a little bit more when we look at the site plan. And then the placemaking and the public art. Kathy mentioned, you know, one of the conditions is using, creating the connectivity, and I heard this term at Planning Commission, I don't know how I had never heard it before, but referring to sort of the old-school crosswalks as piano keys. Not using that here, but really using this leaf pattern, really creating that eco-district sense of placemaking in this area. So that would provide the connectivity across Rock Mill to allow for the connectivity to the Best Buy Shopping Center. I think it will actually drive more folks going over. It's not feasible to cross over Haynesbridge, certainly, but being able to connect to the existing Best Buy, and if that redevelops into something else, that would be great. But you do have that connectivity to allow you to get farther down for that pedestrian crosswalk. The eco-district, just to touch on that, we're required to have seven points. We have provided 11 points with the eco-district measures. I wanted to highlight, you know, Kathy did a great job kind of walking you through the site plan, but just wanted to touch on this. These are townhomes that are rear-loaded. They really engage the Rock Mill Road. And as you can see, and I want to make sure that everyone is clear on this, this would not be a community that would be adjacent to the 400 travel lanes. This is next to the entrance ramp. And so if you, and I had to do this because it, I didn't think about it at the time, but as we were having some conversations and the proximity to 400 was coming up, a couple of things of note. Number one is the significant buffer. That's an undisturbed buffer. Those trees that are out there will remain out there. This site plan was designed specifically for the tree save area that you see on the left-hand side of the screen. With that 400 entrance ramp, the other thing that I would point out is the topo there. That entrance ramp kind of slopes down, so you aren't going to have cars, you know, number one, they're turning or coming across to go, and they're going down. Just by gravity, your car's going to go down. You don't have to gun it to go down, and you're not having to go uphill. So I did want to point that out. I don't have an excellent example to show you, but we'll get to showing a few other communities that are closer to 400 than this is. Again, looking at this, I think this sort of shows where the blue is the amenity space for the residents. And again, that's got a community garden, we've got walking trails, fire pit area. And I think what is really important to note about this is the civic space. It's over a half an acre of civic space that would be improved, not only with additional sidewalks, pedestrian connectivity, we've got a bike repair kiosk that would be located there for folks in the community. If you're out along there on your bike, you get a flat tire, you could come and repair it here, in addition to having a monument. So as far as placemaking and really taking this opportunity to signify that this is part of the eco-district, part of the North Point overlay, we have done that by incorporating both the tree save as well as the enhancements on that corner. This is showing just sort of a two-dimensional of the elevation, and then as Kathy showed you, I think this gets into, you can see a little bit more of the depth of the building and that breaking up. We do have the board and batten and the brick as the exterior materials. And then I wanted to spend a few minutes, and happy to answer questions. I know we have heard some feedback from folks, and so I want, we pulled some additional information. And I wanted to show you, just to kind of orient you, obviously, we have 400 going in the middle. Our project is depicted with the green star and that blue arrow. So you can see the actual travel lanes of 400 are removed from this property, and we are adjacent, not to the travel lanes, but instead to the entrance ramp. To the page right, you can see a yellow star. That is the Walk at Brayden. That was a John Wieland community that was developed over off of Kimball Bridge and North Winds Parkway. That is about 235 feet from 400 to their townhomes. If you go farther south with the yellow star and that red line, that is the more recently constructed Artisan, that's the Lenar community that was recently completed. And that measurement from their townhomes, again, to that 400 travel lane is about 224 feet. Coming back just for comparisons, when you look at, and so those are two successful, people are living there, thriving, you know, enjoying, you know, living in the city in those two communities. When you look at our property depicted in green, if you look at the 400 northbound traffic lane to the access lane, that's about 172 feet of separation. If you look at the 400 northbound lane to our property line, that is about 235. Then we've got about another 80 feet to our closest townhome. So we've got about 314 feet of separation with an extremely densely wooded buffer that would provide that separation. Again, the way that the topo works, that entrance ramp goes down, and we do believe, you know, Beazer has been in business, has a lot of nationwide successful communities, and certainly has studied this significantly to make sure that they believe that this would be worthy of the significant investment in developing a residential community here, and all signs indicate yes. This is a great place to add much-needed housing in the city and being able to provide that to, again, support the LCI and the whole purpose of the North Point overlay to really create a more mixed-use community at large. And there is not the residential use on this side of Haynesbridge. As I said, we have appreciated working with staff. We have made lots of modifications to get to where you see today. I am happy to stand before you with 24 conditions and not request a single change to any of them. That doesn't happen all that frequently, but we would appreciate a approval of the request with the conditions as recommended by staff, and I am more than happy to answer questions. And if it's not something that I can answer, I'd be happy to get someone who can.
Councilman Will?
I appreciate all the information. I'm a little ADHD, so you've given us so much, I can't remember some of it.
Sure.
So on this picture we're looking at here on the north side where the yellow star and the red line is, what are the distances between those properties and 400 versus what we're looking at here?
So that one is about, we are, now you're going to challenge my math, but about 90, a little over 90 feet farther away than the Walk at Brayden.
And what is that property up there, north?
The Walk at Brayden.
And their townhomes?
Their townhomes. These were John Wielands, I think, constructed like 2018 to 2020, if that sounds about right.
So, and I'll preface this with some of the questions that I've heard on this is, why in the world does anybody want to live in a townhome right next to an off-ramp or an off or on-ramp, because it's going to be noisy as heck, right? So that's why I'm particularly interested in these other properties that may be out there, and if in fact they are fully sold and people are living there and it's good.
Yeah. That John Wieland is, you know, that was constructed a little while ago. The Lenar is more recent, and my understanding is that's completely sold out.
Do you know what the property values on those two properties are?
I...
Versus yours? I guess the point of my question is it's much easier to sell a property at $300,000 next to the highway than $900,000 next to a highway.
Yeah, I think so. Our price point is probably mid-six. And from looking at the Lenar, and I don't want to misspeak, but it was not, they were certainly not in the 300s. I want to say there was one for sale in the Brayden community, which would have been the Wieland community, that was at six-something. I don't know how accurate, this was just me, you know, looking online and trying to see. But the Lenar, I believe, is more recently constructed, and that has been, to my understanding, sold out. So I think it might not be the choice that some of you sitting up there where you would choose as far as a location, but I think when we're looking at what Alpharetta is, it is an incredible community with great schools, with close proximity to be able to get to a lot of different amenities, that I do believe that this would certainly appeal to someone who, quite frankly, couldn't afford to buy a townhome in downtown, but wants to be in an area that they can walk to some things and have easy access. So we do believe that there's certainly a market here for the residential community.
So this gets back a little bit to my point. So, and I'm not trying to be too difficult with, but every project starts in the sixes and ends in the eights, right? And the question I asked earlier to Director Cook was, is this really walkable? And currently, it's walkable to the back door of a Best Buy. Nobody wants to walk to the back door of a Best Buy, right? And we don't have any current plans to provide connectivity over to North Point Mall, so the walkability thing isn't, that argument doesn't really work in my mind. And I think when we look at these projects, we're looking at 20 years down the road, right? So it's easy to build a project today where, you know, they start in the sixes and go to the eights, but 20 years from now, they're really backed up to a highway, and suddenly the values start decreasing, and that's bad for Alpharetta long-term. So what has Beazer, and I know you all are a big company, and you've probably done gazillions of dollars of research, but what is it that makes you think that this product, project is viable today and 20 years from now, based on the fact that we do have a relatively high price? When you see people can't afford it, $600,000 to $700,000, $800,000, it's still pretty darn expensive.
And you're absolutely right, and that's, you and I don't know each other that well. Look forward to working with you on other projects as well. You know, I'm not going to stand up here and say, hey, we're bringing you a solution to affordable housing in the city.
And I'm not looking for that.
You know, that would be disingenuous, but this is a more attainable price point. When you look at right now, just, you know, the construction costs, between March and now, the price per unit, the cost per unit has gone up $50,000. Just, I mean, it just is what it is right now with the cost being what they are. But I think when you look at this particular property and you look at the zoning decision that we're asking you all to make here, this property has been vacant forever with an office designation. So for the last 20 years, nobody has come forward to say, this is a great office space. And quite frankly, in part, I think Councilman Mitchell, you know, touched on the traffic, to have a standalone office here, the access in and out of here is not great for an office user. It's not extremely convenient to get people in and out. So when you have a lower volume of traffic with the residential use, that certainly is a plus.
I appreciate that. I'm not an advocate for an office building at all. I don't, I think that's the wrong thing to do here. I'm just questioning whether the right thing to do is to throw up these townhomes if potentially long-term it's not in the best interest of Alpharetta, if those placement of townhomes becomes an issue. So I'm just curious as to why Beazer thinks this is the right product for that piece of property.
Sure. I think that we definitely, we've pointed out two, quite frankly, we picked two that are each about a half a mile from this property. There are... There, there are, you know, a lot of other examples of communities, quite frankly, that have thrived over the last, you know, 20 years on busy corridors. And I, I think, I mean, I live in Atlanta, I'm in the city, I hear a lot of, of traffic, and it's kind of like if you live next to a train track. You get accustomed to sounds, no matter where you live. If you live in the country, you get accustomed to hearing, hearing the, the sounds of, of nature. And, and so I think that it's the same. I think that what North Point is on the verge of really transforming, and I think that this area is only going to continue to be more and more desirable. And so I think that, you know, I'll certainly, if Scott wants to come up here and speak in more detail, but as far as having a residential use here, we believe that the value that a residential community in the city, we certainly don't think that that's going to start decreasing over the next 20 years. The proximity, a lot of people like the proximity to be able to get onto 400 easily, to get, if they choose to live in Alpharetta, but they have to truck it into the, you know, into Atlanta to work or something, you know, that, that easy access, not having to come through other, you know, kind of the commercial corridors to be able to get there, I think that that's a point. And then on the walkability, you know, really going, and I think having, having, a lot of the walkabilities is having a sense of place, having it feel safe, having it noted, this is a pedestrian path, so that people are aware. I think having that leaf pattern to provide that connectivity to the stairs down, you know, to that Best Buy shopping center, you know, right now, I think that the folks that are working in some of those offices, people that were living here could certainly use that, and we would anticipate probably would use that. As things continue to transform and redevelop, I am hopeful that maybe we'll continue to see more of our parking lots, you know, get transformed with other uses. And I think that that is, it, it's a great connectivity to get people down, you know, the grade changes pretty significantly, so you've got stairs to get down into that area. And if you are so inclined to want to walk the short distance to get to the other side of Haynesbridge, there is a way to do that by just, you know, going through and going to the light.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
However, if there is anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item, now's your chance. Seeing none, we will close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
I'll make the motion, I guess. Motion to approve MP 22-06, CLUP 2201-Z-22-07-V 2211, Beazer Homes Delta Credit Union Master Plan, motion to approve, with all of the 24 recommendations as stated.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, a second by Councilman Will. Any discussion?
I would like to say, I think this is a lot better than a 10-story office built and by it, by the ramp. And when you look at Brayden, the distance is further away. I'm glad there's a tree save area right at that corner with the White Oaks. I think that's refreshing. I don't see that whole plaza area where Best Buy is remaining as it is today. I think what, once things get redeveloped with our master plan and our eco district, we will take into consideration of all the walkable areas there, and as that's developed, we will, we will include walkable paths into however that new development looks. But if there's anywhere that needs residential for sale units, it's, it's right there along 400 because the traffic can be maintained and handled in a, in a safer way, so that's why I'm supportive of it.
Councilman Hypes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not able to support this application. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan was passed by this council on October 25, and this was designated as commercial property. It was the same thing in the 2017 comp plan. And interestingly, when you read through the 2021 comp plan, you see directly beneath the map for future land use that the number-one priority is North Point. And I bring that up, and I also bring it up in light of some of the things mentioned by the applicant, all the things mentioned by the applicant. The North Point plan was there to be considered by the steering committee and those who passed on our land use plan. I took note that the applicant noted, said that we're an incredible community, and I agree, we are an incredible community. And what sets us apart is that we have a land use plan, and we follow it unless there is a compelling case to deviate from it. Our city looks different, it feels different, it is different, and it's different in a good way. And when, we have four intersections coming up 400, and each of those intersections has four quadrants. That's 16 quadrants coming up Georgia 400. There is no residential on any of the entrance-exit ramps coming up Georgia 400. Haynesbridge Road and Old Milton Parkway are the front doors to our community. And I heard what Councilmember Will had to say about, you know, what does something look like in 20 years? I have no doubt that these will be beautiful townhomes when they're first built and they're first occupied, but then there will be second-generation ownership, and there will be third-generation ownership, and so on. And whereas there's two other communities that you noted that are built close to 400, they are not on an entrance-exit ramp. And interestingly enough, when I look at the 2017 comp plan, both of those were designated residential and built in accordance with the comp plan, not contrary to the comp plan, as is the request here. When, when it was disclosed that walkability is not actually going to be the primary motivator here to get people, because you can't get them across 400 to the future development of, of North Point Mall, for me, any semblance of a compelling case was lost. It's, it's just going to be a standalone oasis of a residential community tucked in to an on-ramp to what's the equivalent of an interstate highway that's going to be expanded, that backs up to a loading dock of multiple stores that, whether Best Buy knows it or not, they may not be in business, according to what I heard tonight. I don't know anything about that. But, you know, the, and then it backs up to a staging area for apparently Fulton County schools. It is a residential oasis on an on-ramp with no connectivity to the future development of, of North Point Mall. And the fact that it was designated as commercial as recently as 10 months ago makes perfect sense to me, and, and they kept it that way. And then on top of that, in terms of being difficult to support this, this application is, you know, once the, once the comp plan changes and then the zoning changes to something other than how it's currently zoned, once you get to your desired zoning, then you're seeking variances on top of the desired zoning. So when I look at the LCI for North Point, I see a lot of purple, which is mixed use. I see very, very little high density. And this is a request for high density and, and not for mixed use. And for those and, and other reasons, I'm, I'm unable to support this.
Any other discussion? Councilman Dorito?
Thank you, Ms. Sellers, for your presentation. I'm going to be perfectly honest, I've struggled with this application for very similar reasons, as Councilman Hypes already articulated. I have always consistently tried to follow the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which, again, was recently updated and passed only a short 10 months ago. I'm a big believer in, if you're going to change zoning, it really should be done outside the confines of an application with public input, which we had with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And if this was, at this point in time in the city, with the input of our citizenry, felt that this should be residentially zoned, by all means, we would obviously, as their representatives, consider changing that. I'm familiar with the LCI plan, as pointed out by Councilman Hypes, and it is mixed use, and we, this is a very unique application for what I believe to be an extremely sensitive corridor within the city. I know in most recent election cycle, myself and others spoke about how important the North Point corridor is going to be for the economic viability of the city, not only the economic viability to continue attracting investment and jobs and, and keep our businesses thriving, and that we had to do something along this corridor to secure that economic future for the city for many years to come. I feel like if I've supported this, this evening, that I would be almost taking a little parcel of land and just, because Beaver's a great development and their residential, I'm sure there'd be beautiful homes, that I wouldn't be doing in the, with the proper kind of thought process of considering the entire North Point corridor and what we're trying to achieve there in the coming years. I may be one of few up here that believe that office space in the future may come back. I know our company is building our own office, corporate headquarters in Plano, Texas, right now, and I don't think we would be doing that if we didn't feel like there was a future for office space in the country. Granted, we're in a economic, severe economic downturn right now, and we, we don't have crystal balls of how fast we'll come out of this, but the United States is a thriving economy, strongest in the world, and, and there will be a requirement for office space in the future. I think every company in, in the country right now is considering, what is the future of their office space? I know we're changing, but we're not giving up real estate. We're, we're reconfiguring how we use it better, more efficiently, more cost-effectively. So I do think new types of business, things coming out of the ground, we'll have a need for office space and meeting space, and I think there'll always be a need for that. I also say that, and I actually mentioned this to Ms. Cook the other day, just in passing in general, but I'd like to know at what point of residential development in the entire city, you know, do we cross that line of, of the commercial real estate taxpayers to the residential taxpayers? And, and do we, do we go too much over on the residential side at some point? Because that seems to be a big need, not only in Alpharetta, but around the country, to, to start shifting more the tax burden to residential homeowners. And I'd like to be very sensitive to making sure that we keep that balance of a 55% commercial to 45% ratio of residential in the city, for the reason of keeping our tax base stabilized for the residents of the community and future residents of the community. And the final thing I'll say is, for a zoning change like this, or comprehensive, change to Comprehensive Land Use Plan, I always feel like you have to be careful not to set a precedent, and, and we really have to have a real compelling reason to do that. I personally don't see that in this application. I'm a big believer in the pin quarters that are intersections coming up of 400, that we have to retain some sense of kind of entry points into the city to keep it beautiful, to keep it attractive. I'm not sure residential development on the pin quarters is, is going to continue to achieve that. We've been very sensitive since the last time I was on council to the pin quarters of, of the city entrance points, to make sure that we retain some sense of, you know, greenery and, and not overdevelopment and, you know, welcoming effect to the city. So it feels like a, a small, thriving community and not necessarily a metropolis. So for that reason, I'm going to be unable to support this application this evening.
Any other discussion?
I'll just say that unfortunately, I don't believe I can support this either, and it's not because of the product or anything like that, but, one, it is a master plan amendment, and it's a high bar. And while adding residential around other uses, some people may interpret as mixed use. I don't. I mean, we've been blessed in Alpharetta to be at the forefront of mixed-use development for the last 10 years, and we've seen what works. And what works is the walkability and a thoughtful mix of uses. And this is a residential development built along Georgia 400, and in the hopes that at some point in the future, a Best Buy shopping center is going to turn out to be a walkable amenity to the residential. And I think that's just not the case being presented to us. It's, it's not something that I think people are going to walk to any of the neighboring properties. It's just not that environment right now. Could it be at some point? And I do believe that with the increased capacity of Georgia 400, that visibility from Georgia 400 will mean something in the future to someone that wants, perhaps, to be a component of a mixed-use development through that area in that corridor, maybe involving multiple parcels, I don't know. But I just don't see a compelling reason to make this master plan amendment to incorporate a housing development right there, so. That being said, the motion was to approve MP-22-06, CLUP-22-01, Z-22-07, V-22-11, Beazer Homes Delta Credit Union Master Plan. The motion was to approve with the conditions as outlined by staff, all 24 conditions. Those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote no. And the motion does not pass, 6-1.
So that wraps up that part of the public hearing for this evening. The next item and final item under the public hearing items is PH-22-07/City of Alpharetta Capital Improvement Element. Mr. Graves, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're just requesting an authorization of a resolution of transmittal of our 2021 impact fee annual report and the capital improvement element upgrade update. If you have any questions on the material, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Any questions for staff on this item? Ms. S. Wine?
A resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Alpharetta, Georgia, for the transmittal of the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Ms. S. Wine? Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anyone would like to come forward on this
But if anyone would like to come forward on this capital improvement element transmittal, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do you have a motion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that council approved a resolution authorizing transmittal of the 2021 Capital Improvement Element and annual report.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, and that was for PH-22-07/City of Alpharetta Capital Improvement Element in the resolution as outlined by City Attorney Molly Esswein. All those in favor, please vote yes; otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. So that wraps up the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. We'll move on to new business. First item under new business, Director Sasevich. This is janitorial services for city facilities, RFP 22-119.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you know it, our janitorial services for the city facilities, our public safety building, Public Works, City Hall, et cetera. American Facility Services has been servicing our facilities for the last five years. Their contract expires June 30th, and they were the lowest, the highest ranking firm and the lowest cost of the six proposals received. So we recommend moving forward with them for the next five years.
Thanks, sir.
Any questions from council on this item? Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on the janitorial services RFP, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve, I move to award RFP 22-119 to American Facility Services, Inc., an amount not to exceed $117,000 for janitorial services for city facilities, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Do I have a second? Motion by Councilman Dorito, a second by Councilman Will, and that was to approve the janitorial services for city facilities, RFP 22-119, an amount not to exceed $117,000 to American Facility Services. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote yes; otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Pete. We appreciate it. It is important. Consideration of conflict waiver for Forsyth County McGinnis Ferry Road project. That's the next item up under new business, and Ms. Esswein, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you know, Gerardin Davis, my law firm, represents both the City of Alpharetta and Forsyth County, and both of the, both the county and the city are involved in the McGinnis Ferry Road widening project. And while we don't have any current conflicts, really, and an abundance of caution, which is really and particularly in relation to the next agenda item, we sought to have a conflict waiver executed by both the City of Alpharetta and Forsyth County. So we don't actually see any actual conflicts of interest right now, but because, and in fact, I'll kind of go into the next one, Alpharetta, while we were still only representing Forsyth and before we were retained by you, there is a tiny sliver, I think it's .1 acres, that Alpharetta actually ended up having dedicated to it back in 2000 related to a McGinnis Ferry Road widening project that is on the north side of McGinnis Ferry Road, which is in Forsyth County. And that's actually necessary for Forsyth County's portion of the McGinnis Ferry Road widening project. And so while the city and the county had entered into kind of an MOU to cooperative, act cooperatively in Phase 1, and I think that language actually extends into the entire project, Forsyth County is seeking to get a quick claim deed so that they can move forward with the project, and it's for that reason that we're seeking this conflict waiver.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from council? Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, sir.
But if anyone would like to come forward, now's your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Mayor, I move to approve the conflict waiver as presented, authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion by Councilman Dorito, a second by Councilman Hypes, and that was to approve the consideration of conflict waiver for Forsyth County McGinnis Ferry Road project as outlined by City Attorney Molly Esswein. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes; otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously.
Okay, so the next item, do you, sorry.
You have the floor.
The next item is related to what I was just talking to you about. It is a quick claim deed for one, or it's 0.12, sorry, 0.1211 acres of McGinnis Ferry Road that is owned by the City of Alpharetta but is actually in Forsyth County that Forsyth County needs for purposes of completing Phase 2 of the McGinnis Ferry Road widening project. And so that would be the request to approve that quick claim deed so that the project can move forward.
Ms. Esswein, if I could, I have a question for you. I know we had discussed this last week in general. Is it absolutely necessary for the City of Alpharetta to issue a quick claim to be able to finish the project, or would it be possible for us to grant them the easement or something to allow it to take place? As I had mentioned to you before, it seems to me that there may be at some point in the future benefits of having portions of Alpharetta within Forsyth County. And is there any way to achieve this goal without foregoing that opportunity in the future?
I've spoken with our dirt team. Priya said that she's talked to the city's right-of-way consultant, Jason McCook, and he said it is necessary. Whether there would be a different type of conveyance that could be achieved, I would have to check. I don't know if that would be possible at this point. So I can reach out if you want to postpone this until after executive session, I can see if I can get an answer to that question for you. I don't know any option at this point.
Pardon? I'd like us to be thoughtful about that, just because it may preclude other options at some point in the future, as we had mentioned. So I'd like us to make sure that this was the only way to solve that issue.
Okay.
Not that we have any ideas of how to use that property or anything, but, for example, just for the public's knowledge, some cities in Fulton County have borders in other counties as well as Fulton. And because of that, they have the opportunity to use Board of Elections in other counties. And there are just certain things like that, that if we have this property, that it might not be a good idea to give that away. Not saying that we can at some time, but I'd like us to explore all this potential.
If, then I would ask if you could just have this moved to after the consideration of the employment agreement after executive session. I'll see if I can get an answer for you tonight, and if I can't, then we can postpone it.
Is everybody amenable to that? So we'll amend the agenda to address it again after the executive session. Thank you.
Can I get a motion and a vote on that to amend the agenda?
We need a motion to change the agenda?
I would prefer it, yes.
Make a motion to change the agenda so that we consider the matter of a quick claim deed after executive session.
Second?
Have a motion by Councilman Hypes, second by Councilman Dorito. Everyone clear on the motion to approve the change of the agenda? If so, vote yes; otherwise, vote no. And it does pass, 6, no, 5-1. Okay.
So we'll move on.
We'll move on to the next item, which is council consideration of authorizing third-party independent inquiry regarding allegations that form the subject matter of the Judicial Qualifications Commission, JQC, investigation into former municipal judge, court judge, Barry Zimmerman. Ms. Esswein?
Yes. So Mayor and Council, as you know, on June 9th, we received the resignation of Judge Zimmerman effective July 1st, and the very next day, we were made aware for the first time that the Judicial Qualifications Commission had been conducting an investigation. There was a report issued related to that investigation with allegations that are fairly meager as to the basis of whatever complaint they were investigating, and we don't have access to that. And essentially, after discussing this with you, and to ensure basically the integrity of the judicial system, the county's municipal court, and ensuring that there is transparency moving forward, the, this resolution would serve to have the city administrator work towards securing a confirmation of a third party to conduct an inquiry within the next two weeks to look into this, to see if we can have, you know, someone inquire into this matter further so that the council can understand more what the basis for the JQC investigation was, what was it, what it was about, and what the facts underpinning that investigation were. So this is really just to request or commission a third party to conduct an independent inquiry into basically the facts underpinning that JQC commission investigation. And so I'll read the resolution. A resolution of the City of Alpharetta authorizing a third-party independent inquiry regarding allegations that form the subject matter of the judicial qualification commissions, JQC, investigation into municipal court judge Barry Zimmerman.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments? Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this item, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. I move that we approve the council consideration, the resolution for a council consideration of authorizing third-party independent inquiry regarding allegations that formed the subject matter of the Judicial Qualifications Commission's investigation into former municipal court Judge Barry Zimmerman.
Second? I have a motion by Councilman Binder, a second by Councilman Mitchell, and that was to approve the motion, the resolution as outlined by City Attorney Molly Sett, Esswein. Excuse me. Any discussion? All those, Councilman Dorito?
I think it's important to point out to the citizens that we represent that this is a action on your city council to, in an attempt to make sure, as Ms. Esswein already pointed out, to make sure that the integrity of our judicial branch of government in Alpharetta is functioning at the highest ethical standards and is meeting the expectations of the city representatives here on behalf of the people of Alpharetta. I personally hope that any findings of this investigation proves that, in effect, highlights the high integrity of our judicial branch in Alpharetta, and anything less than that would be extremely disturbing to me as an elected official and as a resident of this city. And this is a move on behalf of the city council, I believe, to uphold the public trust in their form of government here in Alpharetta.
Any other discussion? Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you. I am now and have always been in favor of transparent government, and so whatever this investigation finds, making that publicly known and so that we're forthright and open about all of our judicial system and completely clear and open to the public about it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And I'll just echo the comments that have already been made and point out that unfortunately, the process that went through the JQC is not available to us. We don't know what took place. All we know is the document that was issued and that Judge Zimmerman resigned. And so this is about answering those questions about what took place for our public, for the people here on this dais that are responsible for that court system, and we'll let the facts be what they are, but we should find out answers. So that being said, all those in favor of the resolution, please vote yes; otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously. Next item up will be the resolution to appoint a special counsel for local option sales tax negotiations. Mr. Regus, you have the floor.
Every 10 years after the census is completed, the local option sales tax law calls for the county to call for negotiations to begin with the cities on a formula that will distribute the local option sales tax for the following 10 years. The county had until June 30th to call for the negotiations. They did so June 15th, and the first negotiation meeting will be held July 15th. The counties and the city, the county, the cities have 60 days to complete a negotiation. If it's not completed, it goes to mediation. If a formula is not agreed upon by the county and the cities by the end of the year, the tax goes away. So with that said, back in 2012, with the creation of new cities in the county, things got a little bit more complicated than back in 2002, and it was determined that we needed some outside help to help with the process. And we, the cities agreed to use Andy Welch of Smith, Welch, Webb &amp; White to help the cities work through their differences and to help the cities negotiate with the county. We also contracted with Brown Pelican to assist Andy. Recently, the Georgia Municipal Association called the cities together. We were there, and again, it was talked about how to proceed with doing the best we can in a negotiation with the county, and it was agreed upon by the cities there that to use Andy Welch again would be beneficial. So that's what's before you tonight. One sidetrack to that, the city of Sandy Springs determined it had a conflict of interest with Andy Welch or with a person in the firm of Smith, Welch, Webb &amp; White, so it's going to use Brown Pelican as their consultants. That shouldn't make much of a difference to us. And wanted to make sure that, I think the resolution calls, the resolution refers to the proposal from Welch dated June 7th. They updated that proposal, and that was in your packet, and that date is June 14th. So that's the proposal before y'all tonight. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, and we have Molly to read the resolution.
Councilman Webb?
Because I'm the new guy here, and I don't really know how this process works, I'm going to ask a couple of questions that might be basic, but my understanding is we're appointing the special counsel to negotiate on our behalf. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And does the special counsel have complete autonomy in this negotiation, or does the mayor or the city administrator or the city council have any say-so on how that works?
Well, each city will have a team of people, the mayor and a representative with the mayor at all of these meetings, so.
So the mayor will be there, you'll be there?
Yes.
And/or your replacement?
Yes.
And then our special counsel?
Right.
And then that's the team that gets to make the final decisions on how everything's done?
Well, I mean, we're the team as a council that'll make the decisions.
I'm trying to get to, is it just the special counsel? Is it just the three of you, or does it come back to us? I don't know how the process works.
It's a negotiation, and so it'll probably be me, the city administrator, and Director Harris?
Okay.
From Finance, that will be the active participants on our city's behalf.
Okay.
And it'll go through mediation and different steps and things like that, and it promises to be a pretty difficult negotiation based on what we've heard so far with the county. And then, but when we go to those meetings, we'll relay that information to you as the public and our council on what are the, perhaps, tactics, what are the proposals in front of us, and we'll go through that in as transparent a way as possible, but you're also negotiating, so.
I appreciate that. I just, the way it was reading to me wasn't clear that we had a team involved. It seemed like the special counsel was... It seemed like the special counsel was, we weren't, we were appointing a council to go do something, and we weren't involved, but you're telling me that we are involved.
Each of the fifteen cities is involved?
Right.
Along with Fulton County, and, and each of the cities will have their own delegated team?
Okay.
So that, you know, all seven of us do not have to go to these meetings downtown and stuff like that.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure. I've not been through one before. I've watched from the cheap seats.
GMA has a handbook that I'll get to, to y'all, going through the history of the local option sales tax, the eight criteria that can be used, and, you know, some criteria favor us, some don't. So, it, what it's come down to pretty much at the end of every negotiation is by population. There, there's been a tweak or two, so it's not perfect like that, but.
Just because you haven't been through this process, the challenge is that if Fulton County doesn't get what they want, they can kill the process and kill a tax that will cost their taxpayers tens of millions of dollars.
But Fulton County has a lot to gain as well as the city, so I don't see how they would kill that and then lose that revenue base.
Well, once again, as Bob was mentioning, the challenge is that if we go by population, Fulton County no longer has a substantial unincorporated population.
It's all city funded.
So, just for everyone's knowledge, originally, before there was a city of South Fulton, before there was a Milton, before there was a Johns Creek, before there was a Sandy Springs, Fulton County had a large portion of the population within the county and had a high percentage based on that population, approximately fourteen percent, I think, ten years ago.
Let me give you a brief history of the local option sales tax in Fulton County. The county, this is my county days now, we were losing, we, the county was losing the revenue sharing. There was a federal revenue sharing program that was going away, and in 1986, the, the county learned it was, they weren't going to get any more. So, they put the, a vote to the citizens to, to allow one, one penny sales tax. The citizens said yes. At the time, the county, because the county has to, to sign off on, as the mayor said, the county wanted thirty-five percent of that penny to really replace revenue sharing. And so that's how the formula started. The cities could divide up the other sixty-five percent any way they wanted. The county wanted the, the thirty-five. That thirty-five has gone down as new cities have been created, because the legislature pretty much said, county, you give them their population. And so it's come down to virtually zero.
Can I ask what our, our percentage of our budget is in this tax?
The percentage of our budget?
Our, our local option sales tax revenue, what is that as a percentage of our budget?
I think Tom is going to say we'll end up with twenty million this year.
Oh.
Yeah, that's a good percentage.
Right.
So, it's a big deal. It's a big deal to us. It's a big deal to all the cities.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on that item?
We do not, sir.
Ms. Swine, do we need to read a resolution?
Yes. A resolution appointing and authorizing special counsel to represent the City of Alpharetta to negotiate a local option sales tax distribution certi- certification as required under the laws of the state of Georgia, to authorize said counsel to assist in the preparation, negotiation, mediation, and arbitration of the city's lost repeal and consistent provisions, and for other purposes.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a motion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the appointment of a special counsel for the local option sales tax negotiations as read by the attorney.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Will, a second by Councilman Mitchell, and that was to approve the resolution to appoint a special counsel for local option sales tax negotiations as read by Molly Swine.
And just to be clear, that's with the revision to the date for the Exhibit A, correct?
You read it.
Well, so, in, in item number seven, I think Bob mentioned this.
That's the June fourteenth.
The June fourteenth letter should be replacing the June seventh letter.
Thank you for clarifying that. Are we all clear on the motion? All those in favor, please, they vote yes; otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. So that'll wrap up. Your business portion of tonight's meeting will move on to public comment. Not seeing any public here this evening, so we'll close public comment and reports. Councilman Binder?
Yes, um, throughout the year and noticeable increase this week and over the past couple of weeks, we've, we've seen a lot of emails regarding our, our sanitation services, especially glass. Uh, yeah, Tom is working on options for us about our glass service, where they are and what options we have, and so it's just, it's been frustrating for all of us, I know, on that, on that end. I know myself, I've left, left my yard waste. It was, it was there for a few days this past week, so I do, I want our residents to know that, that we hear them and that we're going to work and see, see what, what we can do better to improve it. So, be on the lookout there from Tom on there, and really appreciate you all stepping in and working with the residents, and I know some of even council members have done special pickup services, too. So, it's, uh, it's not, it's not fun, and I think we've, we've got to find a little bit more of a long-term plan of what we can do on that, so just wanted to let you know that Finance is working, working hard on providing options to us on that.
And I do appreciate you bringing that up. I mean, it is important. What we're doing right now is not acceptable, and I think we all understand that, so we just need to find out what our options are at this point. Any other reports? And I'll call for a vote to recess into executive session.
A motion?
A motion.
A vote?
Call for a motion before I should call for a vote. We have a motion by Councilman Dorito, second.
Second.
Councilman Binder is the second. All those in favor of recessing into executive session, please, so yes; otherwise, vote accordingly. And we are recessed into executive session. We will be back shortly.
The JQC will be back at 1:45, next three minutes.
My wife's going to drop it off. She works there, so. They were looking for it, huh?
They ran out of room and wrote her a letter of lock and loaded. I need to have one of those.
Yeah. They've got another vote actually, where they postponed something.
Well, they do have one more vote?
Yeah, they postponed because of something after the session.
After the session?
After the session.
That's what you're waiting on, I guess, right?
Yeah. Uh, no, 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 nobody's there. Hold on, I was talking about the mayor.
Oh, the cake is on.
Oh, yeah. Ah.
Yeah. Very good. Oh, please. Okay.
Pretty well. Hanging around until it's over.
Yeah.
Y'all wanna talk about something they don't know about? (laughing) She's smart. She's... She never has to spend half the stuff we do. So, you know, she's not a moron. But, yeah, because it's scary. It's like her... I was listening to the...
I think he's doing...
Yeah. Okay, I was like, yeah. Now it's funny. And when I was talking and... Last year, I don't know, I was like, okay. Okay? She would say something. Okay? Okay? This was... I absolutely think this was your choice. She was just passing out. This was your choice. I understand. I think you've always told us this. Interesting. That's a great idea. That's awesome. Yeah, actually, come to us. I think interesting a little. Okay. For text install that we used to use. Not that one. It's just inside. That's the one where middle of the night so... We're in the, we're at the campsite or what have you. We're just gonna sit around. This guy comes right through on a horse. There's no trap on it. So, we're just kind of, I don't think that... And that's the purpose. And he pauses and cancels. He's just, so, he's talking to this one. Now, I'd love to be ashamed, but we grew up down here. But Jody's with us and her niece is with us. They can't figure... They can't figure out this guy's name. Shame on her, can't figure out this guy's name. He sounded like Ooh Howr. Okay, then. All of a sudden, in the middle of the sky, we're like, God, your time is right. Worse than Steve. Or White versus Steve A. Better... Dare come hang. What? Well, no, it's an actual product, by the way. That you can find. Um... And with that, I don't know if it's true. It were all just... Middle of the night. Here comes the horse. The guy hit him hard. Now, and... His horse breaks away. Comes tearing back down through our campsite. Um, turns out it tears through the campground. Down onto the highway. Onto the road to the country road. In a corner. Folks are for cars to, of course, move their... This is how... See you. This picture. See you. And you're gonna get to the navigation. That's probably just... I'm good.
Some of the actual theater.
Too. So, it took me... Beautiful. Similiar. Similiar. It's good.
Is this the tour? After we got there.
Always good. Beautiful. But if it was that long, it was good.
Okay.
It is this challenge. Yeah. And the... And the ventilation. Yeah. Is it missing a few? As I think, yeah, when you're... When you're down versus... When you're joking. When you're joking, I'm starting to go over the... I'm just smiling. I'm sitting there, I'm just dying. Jody was lost the whole time. And, you know, and do you realize that, you know, that whole, that whole thing was based around the hospital? What? Not so seriously though. Who knows? You know, Germany, when he was the Cyclops and... You're, you're, you're just, I don't know, where are you getting this stuff? You know? Cyclops, like, I'd say, there it is.
So, she... She was...
Jody does, 'cause her tinnitus must be...
So, Alex, how... She does. It's a... If you ever really get going, like, who knows, captioning or... And it's a place where you can better you understand movies when you have those captions on.
Have an interesting thing is watch, like Netflix brings in a lot of stuff from...
Hollywood and...
So, we're sitting there, we're watching, and it was a movie of, well, it was a series that came out in Germany. So, it's, it's subtitled in English. It's dubbed in English, but the original was in German. By the time they get to the English subtitles, it's like, well, okay, the, the voiceover and the subtitle do not match.
That's right.
And, and some of it, so then we went back and pulled, okay, let's listen to it in German with the... And there's some very critical translation differences. Right? Um... And there was another one, it's actually the one that, the one character was not being...
Oh, that movie?
Yeah. And, um, so I was listening to that in a town with this, remember I was, I was trying to work with talent. I still wanna do that, but it's hard to do. Nobody around you speaks Italian, and Jody has no interest in doing it. So, I'm like, okay, here's some opportunity, I can do this. And, and then I'm comparing it to a subtitle like, ah, like, I know that word, that word, that would get up.
Hey, that's not what he said.
It's purely American. Try not to use... Here, you know? Like, much a lot of English, Dutch, Italian type of things. Well, there's been... Then... There. We were watching some, or... Watching some of the old Welsh... And there were two different series based on Welsh that we were watching. And then we wanted to... Nobody who wears this hat, they're all people. It's like, oh, it's... We did this series called... That's what we did. Shred. It's trash. I have to say now. Yeah, I have to say now. What, where are you, what are you watching now? See, I was just... So... Also, there's more, so, yeah, one of those. I don't know. Never. Never, this, 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 this. Okay. So, okay. Hold on. I did not get all this. Or, I, that would, I could not get it. Now, I'm like, two, two, a bunch of phone, yes. More, like, M R S D, like Morse code. Cause it's...
I can see we can get a better background person. If you're in a position, this may have...
I hope, maybe, eventually.
How would that... Would you...
Just like...
And it's, it's too snakey. I mean, it's people that's too proud of it, you know, before. So, Jeffrey, I've never heard that.
I've never heard that term used in that, and it's...
Who told you, um, that's a lot of time? Where did you hear about it? I said, I've come, that's your, your life, and this is a lot of, but I've never heard of snakey.
We say snakey all the time, but that was like, you know, don't go over in that area of the river. It's, it's really snakey over there. There's a lot of snakes.
So... Snakey.
Uh, yeah, but it is pretty cool. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Before they built the houses, right, the hundreds, we'd say it all... Wait. It's, it's, yeah, yes, all... That was, yeah. Fairly, I don't know, sounds like... What happened to you? Do you recall? So, it's all... Uh... Yeah, there was stuff that came over, and, and at one point, it was, like, run out of time. Just like, I know there's more stuff to throw out and all this, but I just, I can't go through it. Unless you're...
Stolen. Do we have a motion to reconvene the meeting? Have a motion by Councilman Binder, second by Councilman Mitchell, to reconvene the meeting. All those in favor of reconvening the meeting, vote yes, otherwise, vote accordingly. Councilman Hypes, do you approve the motion to reconvene the meeting? I thought you might. So, it does pass unanimously, the meeting is reconvened. I'd like to call for a motion on the contract extension for Robert J. Regus, City Administrator.
Make a motion to approve contract, uh...
Have a motion by Councilman Will, second by Councilman Binder. All those in favor, please vote yes, otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously. That's the last item on the agenda?
Not quite.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Not quite. I'm sorry. Uh, so, the, uh, quick claim deed as to the McGinnis Ferry Road Widening Project. I have been, um, texting with Ken and Priya about this, and, um, essentially, we're gonna have to file an answer on the city's behalf without the quick claim deed, but I wanna make sure that we answer any of your questions thoroughly, um, and, and come back to you. So, since you have already approved the conflict waiver, we're in a position where I can file an answer on behalf of the city to the condemnation case, and otherwise, I'd ask that we just postpone this to the July eleventh meeting.
Just postpone that item?
Yes.
That's not gonna present any time issues?
Uh, no, not, it will not.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. That being said, we don't need to vote on that, do we?
Do we need a motion to defer?
Yes, so, to, if defer is what y'all typically do, then yes, a motion to defer to the July eleventh meeting.
Motion to defer, and, or...
Did we defer to the, to the, till July eleventh?
I got a motion by Councilman Binder to defer until July eleventh, and second by Councilman Will. All those in favor of deferring the item for the quick claim of property in, of Alpharetta Inn Forsyth, please vote yes, otherwise, vote accordingly. It does pass unanimously. Now, do we have a motion...
Motion to adjourn the meeting at ten thirty.
Have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, but it might fail for lack of a second.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Will. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please vote yes, otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.